Special meeting of the Board Budget Workshop for the Village of Westmont, fiscal year 2013-14, and today is Saturday, April 20th. If you can call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Sinica.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery. Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Glebenow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Public Works Supervisor of Engineering Noriega.
Here.
Staff Accountant Carlson.
Here.
Human Resource Director Casey.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Kamek.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
IT Manager Lilcherberg is in the control room. Mayor-elect Gunter.
Here.
Trustee-elect Addington.
Here.
Trustee-elect Berry.
Here.
Trustee-elect Barker.
Here.
And if we could have the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, Manager Cyril.
Just by way of introduction, I'll turn this over very quickly to Finance Director Spencer Parker. But I wanted to ask for an executive session following the meeting regarding threat of litigation. And we need to follow up on personnel as well?
I don't know for sure. I don't.
I believe not.
Not necessarily.
I think so.
So just regarding threat of litigation.
Thank you. And budget review.
All right. I want to start off with going over the fund summary sheet. It's on the screen. It's kind of small on the screen. I'm not sure if you guys can see that or not. It's the one that's labeled 01 on your tablets if it's easier to see there. But right now, we're looking at a projected net surplus of about $8,000. As you're aware, when we left last time, it was closer to right around $50,000 as a deficit. And we were looking at getting some additional information from our attorney. And then I also ran some additional changes during the course of meetings. We had thrown in an estimate for the code enforcement officer. And then, so between last meeting and this meeting, I'd actually calculated the numbers, and it actually came out about $10,000 less than we expected. So it turns out that we're now looking at a projected net of about $8,000. And we'll go through some of those changes, especially the ones in convention tourism, just to kind of make the board aware of them. Any questions on this first sheet?
No.
All right. Let's move on to convention tourism. Trying to see if I can get it to fit all the way on the screen. Okay. So as we discussed previously, there's no specific change listed with regard to the Westmont Center. And then moving into the convention tourism, hotel motel, the other piece of the hotel motel tax fund. Column A are the things that we had budgeted there, I guess, kind of previously. And several of these items were also last year budgeted in legislation. But then convention tourism reimbursed the general fund for paying for them. So we'll go over and look at the legislation impact as well. But in addition, for special events, in addition to last year where we paid for the west contribution to the Westmont Auto Mile, we're able to move in the participation in community events into this. And we've had some brief conversations with the attorney on some of these things. There'll be a little bit more detailed analysis coming to you in the future. But he said that generally, community events are something that he thinks you could probably make the argument that they would be allowed. And so staff working for community events would probably be all right to be putting into this fund. Promotion of those community events is definitely fine. There's no question about that. But the staff working there is, he thinks, probably okay.
Can I ask a question, Wednesday, if we find out it isn't okay?
Well, the only way you're going to find that out is if it's litigated. And there's, to date, I think, only one case involving that. And the only group, I guess, that's standing for lawsuit in that case are the hotels that pay the tax.
Okay.
So.
The only reason I'm asking is because it's he thinks versus I know. But a question may come up from someone else to ask.
It's one of those areas where you can't know because, you know, there is no case law on it. It's one of those situations where I think if you have a good relationship with your hotels and you continue to communicate with them as to how you're using it, typically, most communities that have done so, they have any problems. There's this one case that occurred in one of our neighboring communities where that didn't happen. And that's it.
Okay.
And it just doesn't give enough, you know, specific direction to answer that question definitively.
I know in the past, pre-home rule the first time, we did use that money for community events, but we did not use it for costs associated with staff.
Yes.
So.
I mean, we, there's no doubt we've used it in some creative fashions. But what we've done, and based on the research that the village attorney has done, we have not done anything that's, you know. There are other examples similar.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we built the Westmont Center with it. There are other examples that he found where the arguments were made, and you could make that argument. Now, until that would be litigated and a judge ruled on the facts, you know.
Right now, our attorney feels comfortable with it.
Yeah, and you know how conservative.
And that's good news.
And that's what's good enough for us.
How conservative he is.
Right.
That's good news.
How about, though, the auto mile? Is that still going to be okay to fund the auto mile?
Sure.
I believe so.
Yeah. Yep. Because they use the money to promote the community events, and that's what we do. So we're able to promote community events and businesses that encourage people to come visit Westmont.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yep.
That was probably the only one I was concerned about, you know, is how they felt, because it was also supposed to be helping the dealerships. And we want to make sure that the hotels are definitely included. So any advertisement that goes out, I think we have to make sure the hotels are definitely included. Once we have them in there, I feel confident, you know, let them complain because we are advertising them, which would help them.
Right.
So anything going out in the events, make sure they get good top billing, I would think, you know, because it's their money, their taxes that we're using for it.
Right.
Thank you.
So under the community marketing section, we've previously funded the DuPage Convention Tourism Bureau and the Public Information Coordinator, Stipend. In further conversation with the attorney, kind of indicated that a portion of different positions, you could portion, you know, a specific portion of their payment into this hotel motel tax fund. In conversation with, with the manager, we think that it's probably closer to only put in, I think we'd said, yeah, I think we'd said 40% into hotel motel tax fund, and then put 60% of his salary into the general fund. Is that right, Ron, or did I get that backwards?
No, that was correct.
Okay. So we're only attributing 40% of his salary here. And the other 60%, we'll talk about shortly in the general fund. And then also with regards to, you know, somebody who'd be able to help work on some marketing branding, sort of be an ambassador, sort of a thing, we'd be looking at being able to fund potentially 75% of his, of the payments to this type of a position from the hotel motel. Now, both the Public Information Coordinator and the marketing or branding position, we'd have to look at a little bit more in depth. And John wants to review, you know, contracts, job descriptions, those sort of things to kind of verify details on these. But these are good estimates at this point as to what percentage we think could go where. And when we do the appropriations ordinance, we'll make sure we have a little bit extra just in case these percentages have to shift a little bit. But at this point, we think they're good estimates for the budget. The chamber external funding is definitely okay. We're not quite as sure with the chamber events. We'll need to talk to John Semenac a little bit more on that. But we felt that, to be conservative, it would make sense just to move the payment for, you know, the few events that we do attend of the chamber, move the payments for those events back into the general fund instead of in hotel motel. And then with regards to community beautification, previously, we had the entire amount of the downtown development grants out of the hotel motel tax fund. In talking with the attorney, he feels that the facade grant portion of that would be fine, but the life safety portion of that should really come from the general fund because that's not really part of community beautification. The things dealing with fire alarms and those kind of items really should be out of, should not be out of hotel motel because there's no way to only, you know, to discriminate and only benefit businesses that would potentially promote tourism. So right now, we've got a total of $30,000 in there. And I don't know the specific dollar amount we want to assign to each one of them. For each of the grants, individuals can get a total grant of up to $8,000. And of that, let me verify, I believe it's $5,000 can be for facade and $3,000 for life safety. So if we are able to kind of break up the pools, we could still fund a portion of the pool from the hotel motel. Right now, I've just put in, splitting it in half, $15,000 for life safety, $15,000 for facade. I don't know how the board feels about that split. We could certainly adjust that.
Thoughts, comments? You know, there may be a program, once the new board is seated, we may even want to look at how that program is administered. I think it's time we take a look at it and maybe make some changes. Do we do just one big pool? When it's gone, it's gone. First come, first served. If it's a facade, it's a facade. If it's life safety, it's life safety. I mean, we have a lot of things to consider. I guess the question today is, is $30,000 enough?
Yeah, we tried to break it up to be able to.
Make it even.
Well, to actually address the attorney's interpretation of how we get funded.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah. We had, we had a single grant program at one time, but based on his latest opinion, we thought.
Separated, for sure.
More conservative approach would be to separate it to.
Right. I was thinking more through the approval process of looking at that.
Oh, we can definitely review how that works.
You know, that's what I meant. But so 30.
May that be enough if the TIF process goes through the way.
Yeah.
We hope it isn't.
Right.
Well, we can appropriate more than the budget if we anticipate.
By the time, when do we do the appropriation will be later in the year?
Well, July.
July.
Yeah, much later.
Well, but by then, we'll know what's going on with the TIF, surely.
Yeah, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to get a huge influx of TIF.
No.
No.
Not right off the bat.
Not in the beginning.
No, six months to a year.
Maybe that's enough then.
So.
Yeah.
Something we can probably be talking about next budget cycle as well.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Absolutely.
Great.
Then the limit for the life safety amount, at least what's in the budget, would be the $15,000.
$15,000. We had talked about the hanging baskets. Where do we, you know, I'm not going to give up on that.
So those would be fine as part of community beautification. So we'd be okay to do those. We had prepared some rough estimates estimating, you know, maybe around $30,000 for, kind of for the first year. And then we're thinking maybe $20,000, $25,000 going forward. That's just a guessment based on, you know, costs we had previously and then adding a little bit for inflation, so.
That includes the maintenance, the water and the.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. How does the board feel about that?
And where are these baskets going to all be?
They hang down Cass Avenue.
Just Cass?
Remember, we used to have them on the light poles. And on the board is.
In the downtowns?
A while ago, on them?
It was.
Yeah, quite a while ago.
That was one of the first things to go on the budget.
So exclusively, just Cass?
And Quincy and Burlington.
Burlington, okay.
Yeah. It makes it look so appealing and.
I'm home for it.
Everybody's okay with that?
I'd love to get them back. You know, as long as, you know, it can be used that way, I'd love it.
Yeah. The attorney indicated that specific beautification projects, especially in the central business district, you know, so for the downtown or in the gateway to the hotels would be acceptable. So we can do hanging flower baskets there. If we do tree, we talked to him about tree replacements. He indicated that if we have tree replacements in the downtown, it's part of a downtown beautification project, we could potentially make the argument for that. Or if we were planting trees in sort of a gateway to one of the hotels right in that area, and the purpose was, of course, you know, to make the hotel a little bit more appealing, then we could probably use it for those kind of tree replacements, but not for general tree replacements around town. So community beautification is fine as long as it's sort of in the downtown or at gateways to the hotels.
Well, we can just go and take up the trees that are already there by the hotels, get them over where we need them, and then have our money to replace them.
There you go.
Okay.
Didn't run that one by him.
It was worth it.
So we're in favor of the hanging baskets. I can add that in. Okay. And then the holiday decorations, because it's part of the community beautification, the downtown, he was fine with that as well.
Yes.
Good.
So that's the wreaths, the lights, the ribbons, those kind of things that we've done previously.
Thanks.
So with adding in the hanging baskets, adding in the staff costs that have not been previously billed to the other entities, we've got right now an estimated net of, what's that? This fund of $348,000 this year. So we expect to have about $642,000 in revenues, about $294,000 in expenses, so about $340,000 in net. I know there was some brief discussion about whether or not we wanted to establish some sort of pool of money to which we could potentially give some grants. I don't know if that's still the star of the board, if we want to put a number in there and then, you know, come up with policies and figure it out at a later date.
Well, I think, I don't know that you need to make a decision tonight. I think, if I understood the concept correctly the other day, was that we were now going to pass through the cost of staff for everything to the events. And then if we had funding available for a grant program, that could be part of something that's eligible for that. I think that's something we could work on as soon as the budget's adopted, get some, you know, really strong numbers on what we think those are. I mean, we have a good sense now. I don't know if I can tell you off the top of our head.
Yeah.
But then come to you with a recommended, a recommendation in terms of the program. Of course, it'll be, you know, the new board folks will be involved, too. Go back, look at our old criteria for the grant program, the application.
Update it.
Yeah, bring that for discussion by the board.
Yeah. I'm good with that, everybody?
Yeah, me too.
I like the cushion.
I understood the concept right the other night.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah, I think you need the cushion for anything unexpected.
Okay, so we can take, oh, I won't even say that.
Okay. We won't put any changes into that, but we'll look at that for the appropriation.
And I guess the other thing I would point out, too, is some of that positive net, you know, as we discussed the other day, we're going to have some significant capital items for that building that we're going to need to address at some point, too.
Oh, good, that's.
Long-term.
Yeah.
Do you have any opinion on that?
The difficulty with some of that positive net in the convention tourism is that you can only use it for general projects if there's a very clear tie to promoting tourism. And the attorney expressed his opinion that he doesn't think that, you know, generally, improving streets and things in general would count towards improving.
But I'm talking about something that we originally built with that funding.
The building maintenance issues?
Yeah, yes, yes.
That would be eligible?
That, yes.
That's, that's what I was referring to. We know, we, we know we have some ongoing, or we anticipate things that we're going to have to repair and replace.
At the building itself?
There's no way we can put a piece of this into our emergency fund, is there?
No.
No, I don't think that would be appropriate.
I imagine that. It's a mess.
I wish.
Yeah. Okay. Any other?
Any questions from staff or the public or our elects? Okay.
All right. And I'll just, I mean, this is the general fund, and so it's the other side. So we were able to pull out chamber external funding, the DuPage Convention Tourism Bureau, 60% of the Public Information Coordinator's salary, or I guess we pulled out 40%. We kept 60%. And then we've got the costs for community outreach marketing, and then the life safety side of the downtown development grants is there.
Right.
Any, sorry, I shouldn't have closed it. Any questions on that one?
No.
Okay.
Not from anybody?
Just kind of the other side of the coin.
Okay.
All right. I did want to mention a couple of things briefly under capital projects. And Steve, in case there's any questions, we want to come up here and explain. So we had originally talked about just putting in, we had only previously mentioned Eagle Creek subdivision and had not done the, included the Phase 2 engineering under, for Cumner. However, we found out that we've already awarded the engineering Phase 2 design for Cumner. Is that correct, Steve?
Yeah.
And Noriel? Okay. So we really should include that as well. That's a change from last time. So if we do that, then our deficit for the capital projects goes up to $92,000 if we don't make any additional changes.
Okay.
And then I also wanted to mention, also in capital, let me pull up the motor fuel tax as well to kind of compare the two. So in capital, we have Cumner reconstruction project of 1.2 that we are not carrying through because we don't have the funding to do it. In the motor fuel tax fund, we are potentially budgeting 1.2 million to do Willmett reconstruction. After further discussion, staff is of the opinion that it might be wise to use that 1.2 that we were originally thinking of using for Willmett to instead use it for Cumner. And so we would instead budget Cumner out of the motor fuel tax fund and use that 1.2 million and just hold off on Willmett because it's a more pressing need at this point.
I agree with that. Cumner's terrible, absolutely terrible. You think you can only fit one car on it, for crying out loud. I mean, when I, when I drive north on it, and there's a car coming, I literally have to pull my vehicle off to the side of the road because it's that narrow.
Cumner by, down by us.
Yeah.
That's bad. It's very bad. Willmett's bad, too, though.
Well, I mean, yeah, they're all bad.
Willmett's probably a little more heavily traveled, but.
Can't compare.
Steve?
Yeah, well.
Which one's worse, I guess?
They were both worth doing, clearly, and then that, that isn't the question. But we had one in capital and one in motor fuel tax. They're both able to be done with motor fuel tax. Since it's potentially, a project is to be eliminated in the general fund, the, you know, we believe the higher priority to be Cumner. And it's not just the condition of the street and the width and the pavement itself, which are all worthy, but there's also a related storm sewer improvement that will connect 59th Street up to that intersection at 60th. That will allow us to, in another phase, expand down 60th, which is something perfect week to be talking about it. Because, I mean, even up through last night, we were pumping out 60th and Fairview. And these are all stepping stones to that solution there. So for all of those reasons, if one had to be picked, we suggest Cumner instead of Willmett.
We agree. I agree.
I agree.
On your reconstruction, are you doing curbs?
Yes.
Curbs and gutters, nice.
Any, if we're doing, I mean, anytime we would reconstruct anything, it'll always be with a curb and gutter cross-section.
Storm sewer, what's that going to be again?
Well, right now, if you can picture the whole four-block area, well, the, you know, block each direction, 60th and Cumner. That was until, in the scheme of things, recent, all unincorporated. And it is an area that we inherited, it might, I don't know, I mean, maybe 10 years now, but some time ago, and it is all underdeveloped. There is no storm sewer system in there at all.
In that whole area, there isn't?
No, that kind of all runs down to the creek. But on the other side of 60th, there's a high point.
Which in turn runs into your yard.
Lake Nero, we call that.
Yeah. And then if you picture the other direction, when you go over the summit towards Fairview, all of that kind of drains overland through all the backyards and makes its way to 59th Street, not in a positive route. And there's a small subdivision at, very close to Fairview. It's like three or four homes and a detention base. And that detention base is hooked into the sewer that's across the street, which is hooked into a farm tile that we don't even know where it goes.
Wow.
So a few years back, when, that always drains slowly, and it drains, it just drains slowly. So it's draining at a more restricted rate than the subdivision design. And we have, have a temporary connection with the permission of Downers Grove to tie into a sewer at Fairview, but it is also through a restrictor. So last night, we were, once there was capacity in the sewers, we pumped out of the street and dumped it in the storm sewer that was on Fairview. But that's all coordinated effort. To get that to drain normally by itself, our storm sewer improvement would run, well, east to Cumner and then north to a storm sewer on 59th Street, which was already designed to accommodate that territory. So that water should be going to St. Joseph's Creek instead of the Fairview. And, well, it still goes to St. Joseph's Creek, just where does it intersect it?
Okay.
So this will stub out the storm sewer improvement to the intersection. And then when we're ready to do 60th Street West, it will be set up to accommodate it. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah. You're, you're doing a lot of thinking, you know, you're just concentrating on the description.
A piecemeal to get to a goal.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the steps.
So what would you say, because when a neighbor asks me, once, when this is starting, they're going to ask me, what is it going to improve? What would you say to that?
What's it going to improve?
Yeah, the storm wise.
Well, the.
But just the streets.
The Cumner section, there won't be a dramatic, except on Cumner itself, you won't see a noticeable improvement down by 60th and Fairview. But to fix 60th and Fairview, you have to go through the construction project that we're talking about now. So we're just setting it up to accommodate it.
So really, it's just kind of a set-up plan?
So we don't have to rely on that Fairview Avenue system that isn't ours or the drain tile. I mean, there's other options, not, I'm not saying they're good options, but you could go through properties and run a storm sewer improvement due north through yards and easements, and that's far more complicated than staying within the right-of-way.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, for the foreseeable future right now, it's not going to do a lot until the other piece is done. Because they're going to ask them that when they see construction going on.
Yeah.
And if it rains again, they're going to say, what happened?
Yeah, I'm hoping I'm not describing it wrong. I mean, the, this construction project we're talking about is to reconstruct the road, and that's the biggest asset you'll see immediately. But there is a stormwater step, a component in there that we want to get in so that it's easy to get to the next step.
Well, if you do Cumner, Willmett, you have a Phase 2, but that's not being considered, is it?
Well, that's already been awarded. So on the left in the description, you can see it's a carryover. So it'll be designed, and we'll have the plans for it. And next year, we can just budget for the construction project.
Okay, so you can still carry on and get ready to put it on next year's?
And actually, we prefer to do it that way. We, it's, well, it's, it's far smoother if we do design in one year and construct the next year. And that way, we've got good estimate numbers. Otherwise, we, you know, award an engineering contract in May when the budget's passed. A few months later, we're always bidding out in the middle of summer, and construction's going on, and we're not done by winter. So, we're, we have this habit of trying to design and build everything in the same year, and it's not as efficient as...
So, that one section is still going to be on budgeted. Willmet is still going to have something done, their Phase Two, getting ready for Phase Three.
The Phase Two engineering will be complete, and we'll have construction plans ready to be bid when we're ready to budget for it.
And they won't be outdated?
No. Well, if it sits five years or something, then it would be.
But I mean, just for one year?
If it's next year, it's not a problem, no.
Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
Can I ask, what section of Willmet are you talking about, Steve?
Well, 55th Street to 59th, but not all of the, 55th to 56th needs the road part, the widening, the curb and gutter and that system. And then, the rest of the length of the project, there are other improvements that are incomplete, like street lighting and sidewalk connections are all intermittent. So, it'll be, it'll be to finish everything to 59th Street, but more so 55th to 56th.
Yeah.
No change on Willmet for you?
There's no change, no construction proposed in this budget year.
Is there patching, is that going to help?
We're always doing that to what we can. You know, it's a, it's a village-wide problem, but... Yeah. Issue, I should say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Oops, sorry.
Okay. We can move on.
All right, so, that's the consensus, then. We want to shift to make sure we do Cumner in the motor fuel tax fund, not in the capital projects fund. Okay. The other item, I just wanted to make sure was mentioned, was something that I know has been discussed at some previous Public Works committees, and that's the alley right-of-way acquisition. And just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware that currently, that's not listed in the budget. If we want to put it in, we could, but, like, that's up to the board. So, I just wanted to at least mention that that's currently not in the budget.
I think that's money better spent on trying to do some patching and stuff. I mean...
I agree.
If you improve the alleys, you're going to have another cut-through scenario through this town like you can't believe.
Here comes Director May.
It is just to do acquisitions. So, it's the triangular corners and the things where we've got turning radius problems. That's what, that's, it's not physical improvements at this time, just collecting the property.
Is it, are those areas safety issues? Line of sight, or do we need to think about anything like that?
Well, line of sight, turning radius is, alleys are only 16 feet wide. And you drive an alley, you already know how difficult it is to pass traffic without one vehicle going up onto private property to go around. So, some alleys are more, you'll have to picture all the T-intersections of the alleys. Like, everything along Burlington Avenue, there's a T-alley that goes across it. And garbage trucks, snowplows, any vehicle larger than a car, and I would say even some cars, have a difficulty turning the corner and staying in there. Right outside the Village Hall here, there's a big boulder, right, you know, on the T-alley, because the traffic kept turning and crossing onto the private property. And it's, it's a personal property damage issue. So, the more traffic you have, like in the CBD, and wherever there's T-alleys, like at Burlington and at the north end on the northeast side, those corners are difficult to navigate.
We did an issue right over here in Burlington a couple of years ago, didn't we?
Yeah, we sure did.
Yeah.
Didn't we?
Yeah, I thought we did something similar.
Yeah, there's, there's many of them, and that's why we want to start getting into, you know, to solve it, first, we have to acquire the corners.
Right.
And we're talking 10 by 10, 15, 20-foot triangles off the corners of property.
Steve, you remember, you did that at my building. I donated the land to the village, if you remember that. Everyone kept driving through my front lawn, so it was actually, it heated me to give it to you guys and do the rock and everything at my property. So, some people may give us that property, correct?
Yes. Some of them are, it's a good point. The, that alley in question is an alley that tees with a street. But there was a, also a turning issue that physically was encroaching on private property. So, the dedication of the right-of-way was to flare out the alley at the street to, and that's to allow us to maintain it. You know, it now becomes public property and we can maintain it. The T-alleys I'm talking about, there might be fences involved, or sheds, or structures that would be on the corners that we were interested in. And then, you would, we'd be relocating structures in some cases. So, it's a, just a program we're trying to start. And there's been visitors to the Public Works Committee meeting with the, with these requests, and we're trying to accommodate that.
I don't know how everyone feels, but I'm not convinced that I want to say no to this.
It's the greater good in the long run, it's just can we budget it right now?
Well, you have one particular issue that's been there, and we talked about it in Public Works, even talked to the people. And it's a case of the individual's apron, which is in their private property, gets driven on by semis and cars all the time because of the alley. And I mean, it's, it's right at your T-intersection over here, right across the street. But, at that point in time, we really didn't have anything that we could do. I mean, I think we understand what they want to do, and I'm sure they still want to do the same thing.
Very interested, yes.
Yeah. And dollar-wise, dollar-wise, if you would think about just acquiring anything from them, you'd have to have that money in the budget.
Steve, I, I don't even, I don't know enough about the business that you provide to know if this is a wise question or not. But, if every situation like that, we had a Harold Berry who said, "I'll donate you the land," does that do anything to this number? And do we have an idea about how much?
So, it wouldn't be used if they're willing to dedicate it. If they, there's, the difference between, well, when we want it and when the property owner wants us to have it, there's a different, different types of issues and then a different relationship. So, this would only be used to be applied where we're...
To buy them.
Yes. Buyer, like, I'm envisioning, like I said, any relocation of private property that has to occur to accommodate the need.
So, if people came to us and said, if we don't budget this, and somebody comes to us, you know, like a Harold that's, that has issues, and they agree that they'll donate the land, or give us the land...
We will always accommodate that.
And, so, so maybe we come up with some kind of program, I guess. If this is really a big issue, you know, maybe we put it in the hands of the public and say, we'll do this for you.
And we don't even have to decide on what the policy is. It's just, like it was pointed out, if it's not in the budget, the automatic answer is, is we can't accommodate this request.
Gotcha.
So, we can certainly develop how we're going to proceed.
Would it be more important next year, when there's, the TIF is already starting to go versus right now, where we might see something happening?
Well, my, my issues are not limited to just the CBD. So, I mean, there's, like I said, if you can picture every single T-alley, they're all a concern.
Well, there's also going to be added costs, I would presume, with new plaits of survey going out, and attorney costs, and things like that. So, I don't even know where that stands with just even getting the property. It might be if they could donate the property...
That's all part of the considerations.
We would go through the expense of making sure everything else is done, kind of offset.
We, so far, we normally do that. We take on that burden of surveying it, grading the plat, and I can't think of any example where we didn't do that.
Okay.
But that is...
But that's still...
Related items that are associated to these costs that were proposed in the budget.
Okay. So, the consensus is, this is something we're going to keep out for this year and look at again next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next item I wanted to make sure we talk about is something else with relation to Public Works. Let me pull that one up. There was a question at the last meeting about the ability to come up with some costs regarding brush pickup. And I've updated the sheet slightly. And so, basically, the option that was initially chosen by the board was four pickups. And the question was, what if we moved it down to two pickups? And after discussion with Steve May, we came to the understanding and realization that what was listed as four pickups was actually two pickups in the south and two pickups in the north. So, it would be two pickups for each individual. So, there's no additional savings?
Gotcha.
Yeah. So, it turned out that we picked, we first of all, picked what we picked secondly, but didn't know we picked the second one at the first. That makes sense.
Who's on first?
Exactly. It was one of those things, as we were trying to figure out the costs, so...
Okay. And here comes Steve.
Well, because we're discussing that, I actually have a question for you. Because we're talking about two pickups per, house per address at any one location. And we're discussing that, we've already canceled the April pickup. So, in my mind, two pickups in this fiscal year is next October and the April that follows it. So, I just wanted to verify whether or not, since we're not permanently suspending the brush pickup program, should I be considering a pickup in June? And it's not directly included in here. I mean, we could accommodate it. I'm not talking about changing any dollar amounts. I just, should we do a June and October pickup this year, knowing that the April is technically a third pickup just this first time?
I think you should.
I think we're going to need one this June.
Or maybe even in light of the storm, May? People may have...
Well, that's a good point. We'll pick a date. I guess I shouldn't be saying a spring pickup.
Maybe May and October this year.
I think we need one as soon as possible.
And then, April and October next year.
Okay.
Next fiscal year.
The other part to that is taking advantage of seasonal staff, too, is why.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I got you. Okay.
They don't start till June, right?
If we need to do something now as a result of the storm, we can...
Well, the storm was flooding. I don't have a big brush issue across town, other than what comes up with normal brush pickup.
Seen a few trees knocked down.
Yeah, or blown up.
That's what I was, that's, I was thinking of the one down here.
Okay, well, we'll, I just wanted to confirm, we want to schedule one sooner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Harold? Harold, yes, come up.
Recently, I've been doing a little bit of discussion with the street workers on the brush pickup. And it seems like there's individuals known throughout town that really take advantage of this program, where they're cutting down trees, the guys are spending a third of, of the time at one house versus brush pickup. This is more like heavy-duty tree cleanup and so forth. So, my question becomes, is there a way, I know there was general rules that it was supposed to be bundled and all those kinds of things. It seems like those weren't followed. Is there a way that we can, if we have somebody abusing the program, that the guys are going to waste a half a day at one residence that's over and above us looking at just a, a normal brush pickup? I believe that this would be a cost-cutting saver, you know, throughout the village, and somehow, if we could, is that not the true seed, right? We do have people that, that really take advantage of it?
It is accurate, and then I'll say, it continues to get better as we go on, the, the brush pickup program as defined. And actually, this is something we've reviewed on multiple occasions at Public Works Committee meeting. But we do have a, you know, the idea is to make the service available for people so that everybody doesn't have to get a tree service every time a storm or some issue comes up, or just minor landscaping. But when you have full tree service and you hire a tree removal service to come in and cut down a tree on your property, and you leave it on the parkway for us to pick up, that is, similarly, we consider that abuse. The policy defines the size of the stack that can be out there, and it should not exceed that. And when it does exceed that, we do skip it, leave a notification with the resident. It becomes a code enforcement issue.
Exactly.
And sometimes, it is addressed through court enforcement. Other times, it's, I don't want to call it a negotiation, but that one time, I was like, you know, we come back after we're done with everything else, pick it up, and don't do it again.
Well, because that tree won't grow for another 30 years, anyway. I, I'm sorry, I'm going to be really hard-nosed about it. I, you know, I agree with everything you said up to this point. Leave them a note, it becomes a code enforcement issue, and there's no gimmies. It is now a court, a code enforcement issue. And they have X number of days to get it off the parkway, or we begin to take action. These are hard times. You know, we're not the Red Cross providing free services. We can't. We can't. So, I, you know, I think we have a good piece in place. The only part I don't agree with is going back and just doing it gratis. I don't think we can afford it.
Now, we've had, we've had several occasions, like Steve said, we've addressed to the Public Works.
It's lots of times.
And I can tell you right now, there were two occasions, I know for a fact, that the homeowner ended up finally having to do it themselves because basically said we weren't going to do it. And the other, the other problem that you're going to encompass, I agree. I mean, it is what it is, and they're going to have to abide by it. The only thing is, with the ones who have landscapers that come in, which is where a lot, a lot of the problems come into play, there has to be a way to communicate to these homeowners and the residents, look, you tell your landscaping people, whatever they cut off of your property, they have to take it with them. Because if they don't, and if it really gets bad, we've also talked about attaching a fee to the water bill for that particular customer. Say, you know what? Maybe you come up with a charge for that.
That's a thought.
You come up with a charge, best place to put it.
Yeah.
The water bill, they can't get around it.
Yeah, it's got to be paid.
Yeah, but they're addressing it to the homeowner by leaving the ticket or the notice. For them, then, to ignore it, that's a different story.
I mean, sometimes the homeowner legitimately may not know.
Right.
They may think, oh, brush pickup, they can take my tree. So, you leave them the note, and the note says, you know what, not part of the service.
Right.
Try to get this out in seven days, if not, it's code enforcement. Give them a reasonable length of time, and then begin the process.
Right.
I think it's another thing to go into our little, what do you want, our little magazine immediately.
Oh, good neighbors article.
Get it in there, get a little neighbors magazine, and make sure people realize when they have a service, the service has to remove the item. I know the people are probably doing their best to save money, they get the service, and the service is taking advantage, because I think most services know.
Ours takes it away. Our landscaper takes everything away.
Yeah, people in our block. I've seen them, their, their yards are clean. I've never seen when our landscaper, the landscapers who have landscapers in our block, they, I've never seen them leave piles out there. They know they have to remove them. But I think some people, especially for tree removal, because they're not used to this. They think, oh, you know, the guy will say, well, you know, it's so much to cut your tree down, and so much we're going to charge to remove it. So, they're going to think, oh, we have free, you know, pickup here.
Or you've got a landscaper who can only cut the tree down and doesn't have any equipment to have it removed.
Right. True.
They, they try to hire somebody to be economical, and I can understand that. But, we need to probably put it in the magazine with the time.
I think that's a good idea, especially with all the discussion we've had recently about, about brush pickup. Perhaps that can go in, in an article.
Yeah. We're having discussion about our, our issues that are bigger than what the program's for. And I just wanted to mention that we have the opposite problem, too, where we'll get complaints saying that you missed my brush, and, which is a whole story all by itself.
Of course, it goes out two days after the pickup, and you missed it, but...
That, or they'll disagree with that comment when, because we, we track, you know, where we've been and when. But, the, some of the times, there was, I'll give you the worst extreme. It was just raked twigs and clippings that were just sitting in a little pile on the parkway that wasn't brush. It could fit in a landscape wastebag. But they put it out there because there was a free, you know, brush pickup. And we went by it, and we missed it, and we did not go back and pick it up. But, so it's the little time-consuming things like that, that the program's not intended to address, and then the, then the extreme-sized ones that we were just talking about.
I've seen your guys sweeping the street afterwards. I mean, they actually...
Well, clean up after themselves.
You know what I mean? They're doing things they shouldn't even be doing.
Yeah, but those chippers throw it out, too.
I mean, they're sweeping the yards and things.
Break it out.
They're going above and beyond.
They do a nice job. Very nice.
You know, and maybe even put it in the water bill, kind of the instructions. Because when I first moved here, I, I didn't know what the rules were, and I'll be honest. I mean, I put branches, and you probably remember, me and my neighbor, we cleaned up yards. They were this thick. And how did I learn is when they didn't get picked up, we learned the hard way. Never happened again, we just told our landscapers to do it, but...
So, your name is on the abuser's list. How do you feel about that?
Seven years ago, maybe.
Anything else you want to confess to today?
Yeah, what else do you have for us today?
But I think that would help in the water bill. Just the requirements.
You know, I think we still have the welcome packages that we could still be giving out, you know, from the clerk's office when they come in to do it. Don't we have anything?
Chamber doesn't.
Chamber doesn't. For the new homes, the residential homes? Then we've got to make sure things are in there with the, the rules. Because now we don't have a calendar that we used to put in there.
Yeah.
So, now we better make something up that we can throw in there. Welcome to Westmont, and here's, here's your rules. Because I dealt with, I dealt with a lot of first-home buyers, and you would not believe. I mean, they thought they could put fences up just whenever they wanted, but...
Yeah.
Because they're told, get out of the apartment. This is your property, and you can do with what you want. And then they find out you can't always.
Yeah.
So, it would help if we could do that, make sure the chamber has information.
Good. Okay, anything else on that? Can we move on?
Sure. Next item I wanted to mention, which is kind of a response to some questions we've received previously, is in the IT, in the IT budget. So, this is number 05, dash A on the tablet.
Okay.
So, right, now you can't. Now I made it too big.
Oh, the meetings?
So, we had talked about the meetings, and initially, there was the discussion about whether or not we would outsource, continue outsourcing the video production services, or if we would do it with internal staffing. And initially, at the, excuse me, as we've talked about before, at the beginning of this process, we had identified sort of the maximum savings of internal staffing. And then, there was some discussion about maybe doing, having staff perform some of them, but not all of them. And then, there was the question about how the change in board meetings, number of meetings, would impact these costs. So, right now, we have in the budget, in the $8,000 surplus, we have still the option carried through of doing it with completely internal staff to save the $12,000. If we instead outsource only about 26 meetings, we have the 26 meetings of the village board, then we also have the school district and the planning and zoning meetings. So, without specifying, you know, specifically, one or the other entity would do each of the different... the different types of meetings, it would kind of be a mix, depending on schedules and things. But if we outsourced 26 meetings as opposed to out, insourcing all of them, then we would still save about $8,000. So we kind of wanted to get the board's opinion. Do we want to have internal staff handle it, handle them all for a $12,000 savings? Are we okay to reduce that $12,000 savings down to an $8,000 savings? That's the question that-
I would just be curious to know if Glenn Volgerberg has a feeling one way or the other in terms of efficiencies and capability and quality of-
You know, because he's going to get the phone call, there's a problem.
Right. And here comes Glenn Volgerberg right now.
I think we had discussed this at the last meeting. We're going to recommend, you know, funding 26 meetings a year. We'll handle anything above and beyond that.
So you're good with it, and you're confident that our outsourced people-
Not a problem at all, especially with the suggested change to every other week of the meetings.
Excellent. Good for me. Everybody agreed?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks.
Okay. So now our surp, excuse me, it'll take a couple of minutes to-
Bless you.
-update the, thank you, the surplus. But soon that $8,000 number will change to 4,000. So we'll still have a surplus, it'll be slightly less than we had previously.
Okay.
So one other thing I wanted to just mention is, on the subject of village-wide increases, these are types of things that are, they're spread out among the departments, but it's easier to kind of get a handle on them if we look at them all at once. So the first item is increased costs of health insurance and general agreed upon increases. So these are increases that are based on contracts or previous agreements, personnel policies, such as, you know, longevity. The large portion of this is obviously the insurance increase. And then the second largest piece is the contractual increases due to the police union. The FOP, they're getting, excuse me, a one and a half percent, the equivalent of a one and a half percent wage increase. The other two options are closely related, so there's, jumped on to the bottom one. We're also looking at doing, proposed in this budget is a 1.5% wage increase for the non-union employees. So that would include the non-union employees as well as the fire paid-on-call employees. And then the other sort of village-wide increase that doesn't tie to a specific department is the idea of the restoration of the village working hours to 40 hours a week. As you, the board, will recall, several years ago in the budget process, when we were faced with some difficult cuts, we had to make the, we had to take the steps of reducing the village work week from 39 hour, from 40 hours down to 39, which reduced the number of hours, Village Hall was open, reduced the number of hours that our Public Works employees were working and taking care of issues within the village. And at this point, we're able to, still keeping the surplus of about $4,000, we're able to increase the number of working hours. And I think that'll be especially useful as we're potentially looking at, you know, cost savings and potentially looking at streamlining some other services and, you know, maintaining vacancies in the Public Works area especially. Having the little bit of extra time of our current employees being able to use to provide additional village services could be very beneficial to the residents. And I think it's a time where we need to look at trying to, you know, we've talked about previously, if we can increase services at all, we want to look at doing that. And this is a way we can provide a little bit of increased service levels for, you know, number of hours that things are open, a number of hours that employees are working to provide those services to the residents.
Makes perfect sense. Perfect sense. It's all good for me.
That's fine.
It's been too many years, six days a year, they've been giving up for quite a while, so.
And, and with that, as, as the board will recall, we had initially created something called Economy Time, which was given to the employees as they took that reduced work week, they had a little bit of extra personal time off. And obviously, just sort of confirming that the plan would be with the restoration of the 40-hour work week, that time would obviously-
Go away.
-go away. And I think that's all that, you can see the projected has now changed, so it's the $4,000 net. And just to kind of compare it to last year, if you look at last year, we had a projected net of about $254,000 deficit. This year, we had a surplus of about $4,000. And last year, the $254,000 deficit, just to clarify, it wasn't in the operations kind of things, it was more of the one-time expenditures, the things that make sense to dip into some of your reserves or your fund balance to cover. And we've talked before about how we've got quite a few of the one-time expenses that came out of last year's budget, which is why we're able to make some cuts in this year's budget. So any, I think that's everything that I have. If there's any other questions, I mean, other than just to thank the board for all of the time and effort they've put into this, thank staff, you know, the individual departments for all the effort they've put into this and coming up with the different scenarios. And it's, it's been a lot of work by a lot of people to present this, and I'm thankful for all of them and grateful for the board's, you know, work with this and the many meetings we've had. But that's the extent of what I have. Is there other?
I'll tell you what, Spencer. You know, you're very generous in thanking everybody else. But I'm here to tell you, you've done a lot of work on this. I know that you have put in hours and hours and hours.
With a brand-new baby.
And I'll just, I'll just go by saying that in all the, in the years that we've been doing this, first of all, having it this way instead of binders of paper-
Oh.
-has been so much easier. It's absolutely fantastic, being able to change it real quick and that. And I just want to say that I think when we made you head of finance, I think it's probably one of the smartest things we've ever done.
Well said.
And as far as I'm concerned, I think the new board is going to be very happy with working with you, because in a moment's notice, you're able to give numbers, even when you're just sitting there. So I mean, that's, that's fantastic. And I just want to thank you for all of your work that you put in.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And just to further embarrass him, because he really, it's, it's just phenomenal. And I am so impressed, Spencer, and I, and I think the board shares this feeling, is how well-versed you are on the workings of every single department. It's as though you're in that department. I mean, he sits here, he has no notes in front of him. He, he just, you know, it's, he just speaks, and he, so thank you. Thank you very much. You make this village proud.
You've got an earpiece in or something.
There's a computer chip somewhere there.
And what is happening in your ear? No, you know, he makes us proud, and I think our residents can also be very proud of you. And that goes for all of our staff. Our department leaders have sacrificed for so many years, and that's trickled down to the employees that, that report to them. And I'm really happy that we can put back the furlough days that we have found a way. And that wouldn't have been possible if you guys hadn't tightened the expenses. There's been no senseless spending. There's been no high salaries. I mean, you guys have taken a hit, and we really, really appreciate it. So I just, round of applause.
I just want to say, as somebody that works daily with Spencer, he is wonderful to work with, for all of us to work with, so I want to thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Spence, you came here, didn't you start as an intern?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, he started as an intern.
That's one of the things that-
That's how we got one.
-ever need personnel, maybe we could go back to thinking of an intern again instead of these temp places?
We've got two of them now.
Right.
Don't point to me. Manager Cyril started that way, too.
Right. So, you know, maybe we should be looking at the, you know, those instead of these temp places if it looks like, you know, they're in the right area. Because we've certainly got, we, we made good with our interns, that's for sure.
We've had some conversations about that. I would also like to thank all the staff, too, because I know they've worked very hard with Spencer. And I know you recognize how many hours Spencer's put in, but I literally see the hours that he puts in in terms of how he records his time. And so, you know, last night, he and I were talking, what, about 8:30, 9 o'clock?
Yep.
About some stuff. And I think you, did you come back here again last night?
Yeah, for a little bit.
Yeah.
You remember the last-
His little bit is ours.
With the hours Spencer puts in, he makes a dollar 75 an hour.
And the last thing I said in our conversation is, you're going to take some time off, right?
Yes.
I hope so.
Yeah, I'll take some.
But we did, but we did hire a couple of our temps, too, didn't we? Because we did get some good temps. So we've got some good resources there.
We do.
We do.
Yep.
So it's, it's a good feeling. So to our new elected officials, I hope we've given you a budget that you feel comfortable with and that you can work within. And anybody have any comments?
Well, alls I can say is, I, you know, I, I think we're handing off, from my perspective, I feel that with what we had to work with, gang, I think we did pretty well. And what, you know, what can we say? We found a way to make some stuff work, we had to make some cuts, adjustments, but I think that not only the existing board, but the incoming officials, I don't think